Can I just make one thing? Since it is honoring the 15th anniversary of JFK, so I would like to take a moment to silence. I remember I was 10 years old and it was my schoolteachers who helped me through that day. So, um, we just have a moment of silence for Jay.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Schubert, may I ask if we can go out of order because we asked tonight for the captains of the soccer team to come and be honored for representing the team because of the awards that they've won in the last couple of weeks. And what I would like to do is have a chance for them to introduce themselves and talk about the season a little bit. And I've, of course, brought the trophies and I'm hoping that we can have a picture with them as well as with the five of you so that Mr. Ford can tweet it out to the audience. But this way they can get home and start working on their homework. Because I know this we really want to do, right? Okay. So, maybe what we could do is, if you don't mind, is that permissible?
If the committee has a mind, all in favor of...
I'm in favor of yes. Hi. Hi. Thank you. So, um, maybe I can turn it over to Mr. Ford.
Okay. I would like to introduce our three boy soccer captains. Brandon O'Connell, Joe Buckman, and Ryan McKeon. This was above as much fun as we could have as well. These guys did such a great job. The team that these guys, I think, as captains, did a great job bringing together. We started the season off with a 1-3 record and found ourselves in the state finals. So, I think it's a testament to their leadership and the team that they had and Coach Wilson did a great job. It's the first time since 1989 that a boy soccer team won a self-sexual title and made it to the state finals. And I, you know, I said the other day, we couldn't be any more proud of these guys. So, they did a great job. You guys want to add anything?
No, I think you did a pretty good job. Started off a little slow, but, uh, we came together pretty well for the end of the season. So, worked out well.
So, can I ask, will you do anything with soccer when you move on to college?
Um, still working that out.
That's fine. And how many years have you all been doing soccer?
Uh, I started playing when I was probably five or six. Probably kid start. Yeah, I was playing soccer as I remember. Yeah, same here.
Okay. And what positions did you play?
Uh, striker. Uh, midfield.
And no Mohawks for the game?
Yeah, I don't recognize you guys today.
You got rid of it, yes. I'm sure your parents are happy about that. And so, what about the trophies? What can you tell me about them or tell everybody about them?
Well, that trophy is the, uh, state finalist trophy that we received after we lost to, uh, the finals.
Sutton?
Yeah, Sutton in the finals. Um, and the trophy right over there is the self-sexual finalist, being Sacred Heart.
That was a cold game. And so, my question is how you were playing out there with just t-shirts and shorts since I had four layers of down on it. Couldn't stay in the cold that night. You guys did a great, great job. You should be really proud of yourself and it's an honor to have you come here tonight. So, what I'm hoping to do is that we can ask the school committees to come out in front of the table and pose with you guys so we can take a picture. Mr. Ford will, uh, be tweeting it out tonight, as I understand.
I want you to...
World Cup? We're talking... As you can see. Smile. Okay, I've got something.
Hope so.
Excellent. Great job. Are you still looking for Shaffron? Congratulations.
Yeah, I'm still...
You know, Charles got some...
Yeah. Yeah. I would just inform that I believe Jim Wells was coach of the...
Yes. Yes.
That's how I understand it. Dr. Schubert, um, I would like to suggest that since we have a large, such a large group, maybe we take, um, public comment out of order. Because it sounds, it seems as though they're here to speak.
Those willing to... Is that the reason?
It's by me.
Okay. I ask for a motion to move the agenda. They have invitations to be moved forward. You're next. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any motion for us?
I'll make a motion to, um, to change the order of the meeting.
Any second?
Second.
And then, now I need a vote.
Aye.
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 Okay. Invitation to speak.
Thank you.
Um, I would ask you to be polite. I would ask you to be respectful of both the committee and the administration.
Always.
I know you well, so I know you'll do that.
And, uh, Dr. Schubert, I read the email from Mrs. Cataldo to Patty and I understand that you would like this to be less than three minutes and I promise you that my mother timed me. And so, um, this is...
And, and the reason why is that, um, there's a capital budget meeting upstairs. I'm trying to see if we can get to the capital budget meeting as well, which involves some of the capital demands for the schools. So, it is not to shorten your time.
It's okay. I also understood from my conversation with you last night that you would have liked copies.
Yes.
So, I have made copies to each and all of you.
Yes.
Patty?
Particularly for public speaking at the meeting, 24 to 48 hours is the usual recommended and polite form to allow the chair to review and be certain there's nothing that is unusual. I respect you and I understand you, so I will pass that.
And, um, obviously you know Dr. Schubert as a doctor and on the school committee, I respect you enormously and thank you for everything that you have done for my parents and the school committee and our district.
It's my pleasure.
Dear members of the school committee and Mrs. Cataldo, on Tuesday, November 5th, Karen Johnston and I met with Mrs. Cataldo. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss a letter written by Karen and two other faculty members in regard to an issue that came up this past spring and to be proactive early in this new school year so that the issue did not arise again to cause stress and anxiety for faculty and faculty students. For school committees who are not aware and for the audience listening from their homes tonight, the above-mentioned issue is in regard to Article 24, Section J of the Cohasset Teachers Association's contract. This article states the following: "If the superintendent of schools determines that space exists at the chosen grade level, then children of staff will be permitted to attend the Cohasset schools. Their attendance will be reviewed each year and continued enrollment will be determined by space availability." Please note that Article 24-J, section, I'm sorry, please note that Article 24, Section J makes no mention of cost per student and the notion that faculty students could increase or decrease the school budget. Please also note that Article 24, Section J only disallows enrollment of students based on class size population. When we met, when we met with Mrs. Cataldo, Karen and I pointed out that per each grade level, pre-K through grade 12, the number of faculty students does not increase the total class population to any degree. In fact, in some grade levels, there are no faculty students enrolled at all. At this point in the meeting, Mrs. Cataldo stated that she does not consider the number of faculty students enrolled in the district by grade level, but rather as a whole population. She stated that she considered the faculty students enrollment as a total value that the district could save money on if faculty students were asked to be removed from the district. Due to economies of scale, it is evident that the real cost of the district is simply not a calculation based upon the total number of students and their per pupil expenditure. If, for example, I had 20 students in my classroom and one student were to move out of town, our district would not be any richer for it. We would still pay for the same number of teachers, the same electricity, the same whiteboards. You get the picture. Consequently, any claims of significant costs or savings associated with whether or not faculty students from out of district attend our schools would not be rooted in economics of school finance. Any costs are simply de minimis. Therefore, any annual review of whether faculty students from out of district can attend our public schools should not be based on fictional calculations, but instead should be based on class size population, as it is stated in the contract. The real cost, the true cost, that the school committee and administration should focus upon is the cost to our faculty students' emotional and educational well-being. How does a parent say to his or her kindergartner, first grader, third grader, or even seventh grader, "I'm so sorry, honey, but Mrs. Cataldo says that this year you cannot come back to school. She might let you come back in the district next year, though." When we met with Mrs. Cataldo, we mentioned that she is the first and only superintendent in the history of Cohasset Public Schools to make Article 24, Section J, an issue for faculty and out-of-district faculty students. Mrs. Cataldo's response to that was, and I quote, "Well, I am a trendsetter. We want to send a different trend, a trend in which academic and social growth are encouraged, a trend in which our students thrive in a school district, in which our students are professionally and personally invested." Toward this end, there are many benefits that the Cohasset Public Schools receive due to the enrollment of faculty students. I now pass this statement along to Karen Johnston so that she may read and fold the letter that was written and discussed at the November 5th meeting.
I would, uh, caution the board, this potentially would be work rule changes to the contract, you know, should be collective bargaining. So, if we were to discuss this, I would suggest we discuss this in collective bargaining discussion in executive session.
However, I believe that Karen Johnston is prepared to give this statement and I respectfully ask that she's able to do that for the fact that Barbara has received the letter and a few other members have as well.
I was not aware that she was going to speak.
I told you last night.
And you were going to, um, I would ask the next time, though I would like to see this ahead of time because I discussed 24 hours plenty of time. If Karen Johnson would like to speak, that would be fine.
Thank you. Because I know that she has so much to say and I also know that Barbara's had this letter within her hands for over a month at this point. Yes, Jean?
Um, I'd just like to know how many students total across 13 grades this would affect currently?
I believe 17?
Dr. Schubert, were you allowed to ask questions during the international conversation about bargaining?
This is, um, only to allow for the committee to speak or not to comment.
Um, you know, just in clarification, I don't consider this bargaining.
I know you don't, but we can't discuss it publicly. Comment is just that, you can comment, but we need to listen and we respectfully will do that.
This would potentially change work rules in the contract and negotiations. So, I would respectfully ask the committee not to discuss it. We will discuss it, but I suspect it will be in executive session.
And I respectfully would like to say that, again, Mrs. Cataldo is the first and only superintendent to make this an issue and it has been in our contract for many, many years.
Thank you.
And so, therefore, um, I would not consider this a negotiation, collective bargaining, bargaining discussion. I would consider it more of a respect toward faculty students and faculty. But that's my opinion. And at this point, I believe Karen is ready and Karen also has, um...
Is there an additional?
Just Karen.
No, but is there a printed form or some...
I believe she has given...
Okay. So, this is also unavailable, which, uh, just to let people know.
Yes, and Dr. Schubert spoke very late last night.
Yes, we did.
And you requested a letter within 24 to 48 hours before this meeting.
Which is typical for open committees to have that available from the chair.
Yes. But it hasn't been done in the past.
Um, it's the chair's prerogative and I prefer to have things available, so I do view that...
Well, unfortunately, you and I spoke at nearly 11 o'clock PM last night.
Yes, I know.
So, there was not that 24-hour window. And I apologize. And going forward, um, we will honor that request.
Thank you.
And thank you.
I'll have the committee know that this is the first time we're aware of this as well. I haven't pre-did it or reviewed.
Thank you for letting us see.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Karen Johnston. I teach fifth grade at Darnell's School. Uh, this is a letter that was written, um, presented to Superintendent Cataldo a couple weeks ago. Excuse me. First and foremost, we would like to extend our appreciation for retracting your original email that you sent in the spring regarding the kindergarten class for 2013, 2014, being closed to teachers' children and the review of teachers' children who are currently enrolled in the Cohasset schools. While we understand that our children's enrollment in the Cohasset Public Schools is a benefit granted by the district and it states in our contract that it can be reviewed based on class size, we wanted to highlight some positive aspects of this benefit. We hope that the following points will be considered as decisions are made in the years to come. As highly qualified professionals, the education and well-being of our own children is of the utmost importance. By enrolling our own children, we demonstrate our confidence in and high regard for our school system. By making this choice, we deepen our dedication and commitment to our roles as teachers and the community. Many of us made the decision to integrate our children into the community prior to their entrance to the Cohasset Public Schools in order to nurture their relationships in the community we chose for their education. We also understand that the most recent Niasca accreditation at Cohasset High School noted that enrollment of teachers' children enriched the district's profile. Our strong desire as a district is to attract and retain highly qualified teachers and providing such a benefit is certainly appealing. For some of us, having our children be able to attend school here is one of the primary reasons we came to work here and why we stay. As working parents, we strongly feel that having our children in our school or at the school down the street is a benefit to us and the district. As teachers, we have the flexibility to attend meetings and prepare lessons before or after school while our children complete homework or attend RISE. We don't need to rush home after school to meet our children getting off the bus, so we have the opportunity to spend extra time planning and preparing in our classrooms. As educators, we know that continuity and predictability is vitally important for a child's overall development, school success, and achievement. Children form bonds with their peers, their teachers, routines, and their school community. A child's education thrives on consistency and the notion that our children might be enrolled one year but not the next would be heartbreaking and so difficult for our families. As teachers and parents, our wish is that careful and thoughtful consideration be given to enrollment decisions so that our children's education remains consistent. Thank you for your time and we look forward to communication regarding this matter.
Thank you.
At this time, um, our union will go home to plan for tomorrow and the rest of the week and do all the schoolwork we need to do at home. But I respectfully hope that you reconsider, Mrs. Cataldo, um, your determination to make whether or not a child's educational career being possible each fall changes. It's very stressful for families. It's very stressful for the child and is, um, not child-centered. And, again, I respectfully request that you look very, very carefully at my statement, which has been reviewed by economists and clearly, children of faculty students do not hurt this district detrimentally. Again, it is de minimis. And I'm sure Mr. DeGeneres will be able to help the school committee figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank you all for attending. Um, this is very important. We'll take this into consideration and I, as one member of the committee, um, has 100% behind the schools, so I will do what's best for the district. Next up is June 5, 2013. We have a motion for the minutes of June 5, 2013.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 5, 2013. Second?
Any discussion?
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up is the approval of minutes June 13, 2013.
You know that I'm not going to let something go.
I'd ask for a motion approved June 19, 2013.
I make a motion?
Yes, there's a second.
I'll second.
Minutes of June 13.
If there's a discussion.
There is. Um, on page two, at the top, I will say that there were minimal, there are minimal edits to this version of the minutes. However, um, the way that some of the sections were presented, for lack of a better word, um, it seemed like we only discussed one speaking point during, and I know we're not going to put every single thing in there, but I would suggest that where it says the committee discussed the new memorandum of understanding between the Cohasset Public Schools and the Cohasset Police Department, I would suggest that the minutes reflect that changes to the handbook were outlined for the school committee. And then, you could say the committee discussed the memorandum of understanding. It's not a new memorandum of understanding. Because it said, it makes it sound like that whole section was all about the memorandum of understanding. It wasn't.
So, it's also not new. It's been outlined.
Exactly. Okay?
So, you want to remove new?
Yes, and I want to add, changes to the handbook were outlined for the school committee.
Can I just also, I don't know if this matters in the word new. I'm not nitpicking over new. I just want you to know that every year we sit down with the police to go over and make changes in the memorandum, even if mine was, so I don't know, substitute that as new or not.
No, it was 12, though.
Yeah, I want to put in the annual.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, replace new with annual.
And then, um, the discussion of the middle and high school schedules for the, for the next year. I think it's important to note that the changes, the adjustments to the schedule were made after much input from the community with the principals and assistant principals. So, I would suggest that that sentence start with, "After considering community input, adjustments have been made to the middle school schedule to enable CMS." Okay? And then, um, it also says...
Can I just say something?
Yes.
Um, this is, the good thing about minutes, it, we could look at things that we didn't finish. And in terms of the memorandum of understanding between the Cohasset Public Schools and the Cohasset Police Department, it said that we ask for the policy to be clarified before the agreement is signed.
Yes.
Clarify the policy. This is from, uh, June 19, 2013. It is now November 20th, so...
And I might add that after watching the discussion, we were also, it was to be brought back to us at another meeting and we haven't seen it. And then, Dr. Lee says it's November 1.
Right, so there is no...
So, we need to work on that.
Yeah, and there's no, at this point, there is no agreement in many K9 and search.
No, absolutely not. It's not part of it. And we did sign a new one because we had to for a grant, um, the, uh...
Minus the K9 search.
Oh, that's, that was not in it. Never was. Not part of the discussion at all.
Right.
Um, we have been meeting, as you know, I'm on the board for the impact, for the North Board, um, for Mike Morrison. And one of the things they did recently, we were in Wellesley last month and they talked about things we need to do to change a memorandum of understanding. So, we're going to be sitting down and probably doing a complete overhaul of that memorandum based on new information that we only received a few weeks ago. So, what we have now is, is absolutely fine. Doesn't need to be changed presently, but what they're doing is they're trying to help districts to be reflective and, and fully encompass everything we need to make sure we protect our kids. That's really the purpose of it.
Okay. And then, um, adjustments have been made to the middle school schedule to enable CMS students to take a semester of art and music each year. Tiered support, TST, tiered support, has also been added to the school day. Because I think that's something important that we want to capture also. And then, under bell schedules, it just says bell schedules. In addition, 10 minutes have been added to the school day. Bell schedules have been adjusted.
Yeah.
In addition to, and, and in addition, 10 minutes have been added to the school day.
Yeah, again, you know, these have been...
And that's it. Yeah, but we need to, we need to be able to pick them up in a year and understand what the conversation was. I realize that we don't want to capture every word, but it's nice to not have to watch a four-hour meeting to figure out what was done at that meeting.
Then, after the amendment to the amendments on the floor.
I make, um...
The adjustments for...
I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended of the meeting that we're talking about, June 19, 2013.
And I will second that.
Okay. This will be for the amendment of the minutes.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Now, the original motion, which is the approval of the minutes of June 19, 2013. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Well, minutes of 2000, uh, what is it? 2019, 2000, uh, yeah, 2000, June 19, 2013, as amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, nothing under name. Five, nothing passes. Next, um, technology update. Well, I do want to start with, with the technology update. Um, there were a couple of things that were going on. One is there's a capital budget meeting upstairs, which Bob and I was at. He was going to be here for that, so he's not, he's up there now presenting the capital budget for a couple of key things. Yesterday, at, um, the House Ways and Means Committee of the, um, of the House from Massachusetts had a bill come out and potentially go to the floor for internet technology. It's the Internet Technology Equipment and Related Project Amendment Number Two, which is the Internet Technology Bonding Bill. It came out of committee to the floor yesterday around noon and we were working the previous 24 hours to get an amendment on specifically for, um, Cohasset. And it went to the floor. It voted, cleared the floor, but it was voted without amendments allowed at the, uh, at the vote level. So, the amendment that was asked by Doc, by Chairman Bradley was not allowed to be added. It did pass through the House. It will go down to the Senate. So, the, the main thing which we, um, from the school's point of view, um, is the Office of Administration of Finance, this $50 million coming out of bonded programs, which would be a matching grant administered by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to help those public school districts without the access through broadband defined by Chapter 6B of 40J, the general laws. The broadest, this is the broadband imperative recommendations to address K-12 infrastructure needs. This is the, uh, impetus behind the one-to-one initiative from the state level. So, this is the monies that are coming from the state, $50 million for the 437 districts that are out there. I'm not sure the exact number of districts are there, but it's about 450 districts in the state. These are the ones which will be available for internet technology accessibility for the PARCE program and potentially for, if the MCAS are continuing, to be able to do this online computer one-to-one. And we were working the previous 24 hours to get an amendment on specifically for Cohasset. And it went to the floor, it voted, cleared the floor, but it was voted without amendments allowed at the, at the vote level. So the amendment that was asked by Dr., by Garrett Bradley, Chairman Bradley, was not allowed to be added. It did pass through the House. It will go down to the Senate. So the, the main thing which we, from the school's point of view, is the Office of Administration Finance, it's $50 million coming out of bonded programs, which would be a matching grant administered by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to help those public school districts without the access through broadband defined by Chapter 6B of 40J, the general laws. The broadest, this is the broadband imperative recommendations to address K-12 infrastructure needs. This is the impetus behind the one-to-one initiative from the state level. So this is the monies that are coming from the state. $50 million for the 437 districts that are out there. I'm not sure the exact number of districts are there, but it's about 450 districts in the state. These are monies which will be available for internet technology accessibility for the parse program and potentially for, if the MCAS are continuing, to be able to do this online computer one-to-one. So the monies are there, the question is whether we'll get to the Senate. How can we get it passed? There is an option that the Senate could put an addendum, an amendment onto it at the Senate level, where I have not a chance to talk to Senator Hedlund, but that would be the next step. I'll speak to him. I did speak to Garrett Bradley's office about this particular. So I'm hopeful that if it goes to the Senate, we could potentially get an amendment on for local areas here, Citrus, Cohasset, Hingham, the other representative areas of Senator Hedlund's. So that is the other option, fortunately the amendment that just didn't go through. This would go to a joint committee, then go, if approved, then go to the government.
And what would be the amendment?
What was, what Garrett Bradley had presented was $250,000 for internet technology availability for infrastructure improvement of the town.
Because we have to make it more broad, because we already have Wi-Fi. We already spent the money. And we're not gonna probably get reimbursed for what we already did. So this would be in addition to.
That's right.
Because in our case, because the way that I hear, I read the law, you know, that was passed in the House. And I believe the intention is to have Wi-Fi throughout.
That's right.
But those districts that already have Wi-Fi, this amendment that Garrett, I guess, wanted in there is to give us money to improve our situation.
That's exactly right.
For those who already have Wi-Fi.
That's right. Now, the one thing is, this would be.
What would that money go to? Just maybe one, towards one-to-one technology?
It would.
In addition, since we already have the Wi-Fi.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, so we would get to a higher level than some of, they're trying to get everyone to the basic level.
That's right. So this would give, I mean, you know, some of the grants here are not just specific for, you know, it's just access, provided an insulation requirement, other capital improvements. So the other capital improvements are in there. So that could be not just necessarily Wi-Fi. So it's.
Other capital improvements was in the original House bill?
No, that's what passed.
Yes, so they're hoping that we can be in the other capital improvements.
That's right.
So the states were still eligible.
Oh, absolutely, no, yeah, this is.
So why would he have to have an addendum?
Because it was, it was additional monies that would be for, for the town.
Oh, because our town, it's just for Boston?
No, no.
No, it's for all the districts.
He would get it specifically for Cohasset.
Yes. Why wouldn't the present, why would it need to be an addendum?
Because he, he could carve out 250,000 of the monies as opposed to having it split $50 million through the 459 districts according to probable distribution by the Chapter 7 monies. And we would probably not get nearly as much.
Funny thing that would come about.
Well, if it, if it passed on the floor, then it would be added to the bill.
But what would make people vote for it?
Well, that's probably why the amendment was not, that's why there were no amendments allowed.
I don't see, that's not a strong enough argument. Like, we needed to make a much stronger argument. There's no freaking way that that was passed as word. When I read what I read about the potential addition from Garrett, I said to Garrett, we, we need to come up with something worded a little differently. I know quite a few of the legislators, legislative people in the House, and they're just probably saying, what do they think they're thinking in Cohasset?
Well, I mean, there, there are a lot of other people giving amendments as well.
Correct.
So it wasn't just.
I know, but we had to come up with something a little different than that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's.
A project or something that we were doing.
I mean, I presume that's why.
Social significance.
Yeah, I mean, I presume that's why the other amendments were not allowed as well, as a broad.
Correct.
You know, it was.
And were the other amendments coming from fairly affluent communities that were not gonna do well with the split?
I would presume, yeah. I mean, that would be typically the.
We're gonna do something like that, we have to come up with something that's.
So.
Yeah, 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 a little different. Yeah, if I.
He was trying to get it through.
If I knew that, I would have been talking to Garrett and I would have maybe helped worded it differently.
Well, it, it sounded like it needed to be out fairly quickly because I.
Correct, but he didn't call me, or maybe he didn't.
Yeah, I mean, I called him only after I knew that it was coming out of the House Ways and Means Committee. But you're right, I, I think timing is, is what occurred.
Correct.
It came out of the House Ways and Means Committee, it was gonna go to the vote almost immediately.
And maybe we need to have some sort of emergency meeting when something like that is up, so then we would have given some guidance of how to word it so that we wouldn't look like some spoiled little people in Cohasset, money, money. There has to be something that stands out about our situation that makes people think that we deserve it in terms of some of the things we're doing, like the cable, or, you know, the interface between cable and the community. I could have thought of lots of ways to sound a lot more convincing. And so when something like that is coming and we only have 24, 48 hours, maybe there's.
Or less, yeah.
Or less, I don't know, we could maybe come up with something. An emergency meeting with our superintendent.
There are, I mean, there are options for emergency meetings for public safety, for example.
Right.
There's not a lot to do it from a committee point of view to post it from the top.
Right, but maybe him interfacing with the superintendent and the business manager or, or something.
Yeah, I mean, they, they did call, it was a matter of.
Correct, yes.
You know, the timing was.
But what the amendment was, how it was worded, just not gonna fly. We all know that.
Just so you can, I can probably, since I got the email, I received the email on Monday at, somewhere around 3:30 in the afternoon.
Right, from Garrett.
And I wrote the office and said, for the next 48 hours, how should I structure my life? And they said, have it in before noon time tomorrow. So we had that small window to do anything. And then we sent something over to them and asked them to clarify if this is what they were looking for. They said, this is exactly what we're looking for, so we left it with them.
Correct, yeah.
So we did check in, but it was such a small window, we couldn't have caught up.
Well, yes or no? Obviously, we can't have a school board meeting, because that would go against our rules. But in, when it comes to political stuff, I mean, you could have people who are not a school board act as consultants to you, who might be helpful in terms of, you know, looking out for the, the community of Cohasset, the districts, that's interest in terms of legislative initiatives. We have a number of people in town that probably could have helped you with this.
Right, well, how.
I mean, obviously, I couldn't, but I'm not gonna be on the board forever.
Well, the email that came to us wasn't actually the law. We had something very different in the email. So we went by what we received in the email in fairness from the office.
Correct.
And we built something around their request based on that, but not the other pieces. As we were announced to.
You know, because the time was rather different. The other option is to try to get it to the Senate, and have it tagged in the Senate bill.
Correct.
And then if it goes to Congress, who may potentially could be a good option there.
Correct, so maybe we could talk about it. We have time between now and the future.
Probably, probably a couple of weeks from now, I understand.
Correct. Because we know we can come up with something a little bit more, how would I say?
Substantial?
Yes.
I'm trying to be difficult on that.
That's okay.
Because Garrett's a friend, you know, we just have.
We were written, they even contacted.
Yes, he did.
And it was fantastic. I know it was a number of districts, no, oh, no, districts. Districts that were well endowed, there were other districts.
Correct.
I was glad to see the monies there, because that's $50 million bucks, which is a fair amount. But I think we still have options. You know, the option would be the Senate rider, around that. That was what I was doing the last 40 hours, with phone calls and other things last evening. So, any others?
Okay, so, the, just so you know, so Rob's presentation probably would have been 45 minutes tonight, but because of the timing of the special town meeting, in fact, the Capitol scheduled simultaneously with us and asked him to be present because they have, they wanted to see some review of some things he's done in the past and what he's thinking about in the future. We had to make sure he got there. So we appreciate that the committee is willing to let him come on your summer fourth. He already has it in his schedule to appear and give you an update.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if it has to do with the technology update, but is he involved in the school access and FOBs and everything like that?
Yes.
Okay, because the community member was concerned about the progress in that regard.
Yes, we're aware of that.
It was actually the advisory committee is concerned about our lack of progress.
Well, part of it is, if, I didn't mean to cut you off. Part of it is that we've had some structural issues that have to come into play. And I know we talked about last spring that we needed things like, and that kind of ties into the security grant, but I know we talked about some structural changes for the school in terms of doors, and with the changes of the doors become the FOBs and the lobby guard and other items like that. The doors weren't budgeted last year, they're now budgeted. And the doors will be moving forward. In fact, changes are already being approved, so things can begin in the district so that everything can be put out.
But I, I would respectfully recommend talking to the advisory chair about this, because he was concerned about what's going on with it.
Absolutely, I will talk to.
So we need to communicate with him.
Yeah, I'll text him through now.
Because they know about the security grant and they supported it. So we want to make sure that they know why it's been delayed. They also gave us money to implement.
Exactly. I think that's what they're most concerned about, them taking us to implement.
The other thing is.
And it hasn't been implemented.
The other thing which will probably have to develop is a policy of what the school committee would recommend for the policy for just physically, how to implement it, what.
Correct, but they gave us money to implement, so already November 20th. We need to give them feedback. When did they give us the money?
January. We just got the grant yesterday.
Right, okay. No, the money for implementation from the town.
The town piece was January, but the doors had to come, and that came out of the grant that just arrived yesterday.
Last January, we're talking about, right, yeah, so we need to give updates.
Right, but we expected the doors to come sooner, just so you know. And then we found as the spring came around, nothing had been budgeted.
Oh, totally.
So I did want to make sure everybody understood that the grant has arrived so that we can start to do the changes.
Chair?
Yes.
No, I, I respect that in terms of the operational issues. But when we get money for something, it's really good to communicate to whatever, like advisory or that what's, give them that, like a progress update.
Sure.
So when I'm walking through the town, they, they, what's going on?
No problem.
So they're not so frustrated, the frustration level was kind of getting really, really high.
And, and you could ask them to call us.
Yeah, I did, I told them to talk to you.
When I hear from them, I'm gonna have to see.
He should be as well, I should have him call us as well. I'm not certain he did.
We probably should put in our agenda every so often if somebody's giving us money and just for the public, so they have the progress update. So then we'll give it out to the, to everybody else.
The next thing on the list is an approval of a trip to Quebec from May 2014. And I'm gonna let you step up. We gave you, we didn't have this in our packet when it went out on Thursday. We got this today, well, actually, I know you sent it probably over the weekend, was it?
I think I sent it yesterday.
Yesterday, and I wasn't here for most of the day. But anyhow, so we printed it up, it's in your hands now, and so we can let you come aboard.
Well, I'm Catherine Sanchez. I am French teacher in middle school and I'm proposing a Quebec trip for grade eight students, May 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, 2014. I have a strong interest from students and parents, 28 students I have this year who are interested in going. I, well, the, the trip is the same, I've been doing this my eighth year, this will be my eighth year, taking students, but it goes back, it's a tradition, it goes back a long way. We do, you know, it's like a historical, cultural, very academic trip, but it's also a fun trip. So we do, we do a tour of the city, the city of Quebec City, and we visit museums, history museum, as well as there's a riverboat cruise. And we do a sugar shack, traditional boat dancing at the, and see the maple process, the maple sugar processing at the maple sugar shack. So it's, it's a fun activity and it's academic as well, as I said. The students keep a journal, we have a presentation critique of a restaurant. And that's about it. We do have, I will be going with the same tour company, Jump Street, that I've been, I've gone with in the past. And we have a 24-hour tour guide who stays with the group for the three days we're there. Same tour company, and we also have, Blue is our bus, bus company as well, and they're located in Massachusetts. Hotel is, I don't know if you want really more information, but we stay at the same hotel, Plaza or Must, clean, nice, really nice hotels. And that's about it. I do have the itinerary, I have the proposal, and I also have the itinerary, the last page. So we will pursue, we have the itinerary. We have, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, just a couple of questions to ask.
Okay.
So 28 students, it's $600 a student, and how do you do, do they do fundraising? Do the parents just write checks? What happens if parents don't have the funds to participate?
Yes, we have a small group this year, so our cost has gone up. I am trying to, we're trying to negotiate the cost. So this is not the final itinerary, because we're talking about maybe replacing, we actually replaced the, the art museum, we're not gonna go there this year because I have a small group. So as far as, we don't do any fundraising, it's parents. We did in the past have some financial aid for students through the, I know it's the Cohasset Community Services, I'm not sure the name of that.
And social services.
Yeah, on that board. Oh, okay, the social services. So we have in the past had some issues with financial aid and either, you know, whether we help out, but it is, 600 would be the top of our, you know, the price. It seems high. I will have a parent meeting with your approval, if I get the approval to go forward. We will have a parent meeting and discuss it. If it, if it can't go forward, you know, if we don't have enough interest, we won't go. But it is, it's just kind of up there this year because I have fewer students, so.
How many students are taking French this year?
28.
Okay, so that's it.
Right. And everyone's interested in going.
Okay. It's just the whole class?
I have 50 students next year. So this happens just to be a small, small class.
Do you remember how many were last year?
I had 34, 34 last year.
Oh, okay, all right. So next year.
Right, next year I have 50, and then the following year I have 55.
Okay.
So this, 7th and 8th grade, big group, yeah.
What was the cost in the past?
It, last year was about $550.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been, every year it's been going up. I am talking to the tour, my contact person, and where she is talking about maybe replacing, not the hotel, because the hotel is, you know, but I think some of the activities, we might replace some of the activities. Hopefully, we'll keep the, the, the cruises, the river cruises, but, so maybe the restaurant might change.
I'm advocating for you here. But I'm Sanchez also takes payments, so she doesn't expect someone to walk into her one day with a check for $600. You know, it's incremental.
Right.
Which I think that that helps people too, and they can plan.
Right, right, yeah. We just have to do the down payment, so we reserve the hotel and the activities. And then we just.
And just one thing, with almost all of them probably on phones, just warn them ahead of time with their plan.
All the volume charges?
I mean, we, we looked at it before, before one of my sons went, so just to let them know. Some of the plans covered, some of the plans didn't.
Right.
Ours happened to cover Southern Canada. It depends on the plan. So just to warn the parents. $600 to you pay for, the trip is tripled with, you know.
The smarter your phone, the more it costs.
And they all have them now.
Good point. Can I ask you a question? So now that we seem to be a district that's really coming up with our technology, creating the 21st century classrooms, once they have a strip, do they communicate with any kids up in Quebec? Will they be able to have FaceTime exchanges and preparation? And they get us there and meet sort of the pen pal at FaceTime?
Right.
And they communicate afterward so that we can take advantage of the technology and use it as a learning tool, preparing them to go up? Having them do something while they're there and then coming back to the presentations?
Absolutely, I would love to do that. To do, like you say, FaceTime, you know, correspondence, pen pal, and through, through video, and then also writing, and also, once we get up there, maybe meeting at the boat cruise, having some kind of meeting. It's hard on the weekend because we only get the three days, and one day is, you know, school day. So by the time Friday, by the time we get up there, schools, the session's over. So we could not go to a school, because it's such a short trip, unless you want to give it four or five days. I don't know if we could do that, but anyway, it, so it would be like a weekend. We would meet on the, on the cruise, or we would meet in town. So I think that would be just wonderful if we could get to that, especially where they're so close, but yet such a, you know, cultural difference, language difference.
Sure.
You know, so that would be great.
And do the students ever come down and visit us, or is us, is it only us going up there?
I have seen, yeah, there are groups of students that come down.
Um, I have seen, yeah, there are groups of students that come down, and that could be, you know, an exchange, like they do in, they do in the French, uh, program in high school, and they do in the Spanish, so they do an exchange, they do a family exchange, homestay. But that's something that we could think about doing, is where they come down and visit our school, and we visit their school. The thing is the time constraint for a middle select, um, the middle school three day, whereas high school has the week or the ten days or two weeks. We only have those three days, a short, uh, time, but that's something that would be wonderful, yeah.
Absolutely. So then, but I, I would also ask, because the trip is scheduled for May second through May fourth, so, May seventh, we have a school committee meeting, and perhaps some of the students would come and talk about their experiences to the committee, so that they can see the frudge of what happened.
Yeah.
Turn it on.
Okay.
Um, and make a motion, or I ask for a motion, uh, to accept the, uh, support of the three-day education trip to Quebec City.
Um, oh, sorry, go ahead. Are you done?
No.
Okay, I will, uh, make a motion to approve the Quebec trip for May two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Your second. On any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five, nothing, pass.
Can I just say, Dr. Lee, did you say something? Did you second that?
Yes.
You're keeping it, thank you. I just want to share it right now.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Um, the next thing on our list is- She's, but the parents consume it. Yeah. We might make that part of the trip in to see us.
The maple sugar butter last year was unbelievable. Who could eat it with a spoon?
All right.
I did.
I did.
I did want to.
Uh, so the next thing on our, my report is the part-time bookkeeper. I know that last June, um, Mr. DeGeneres came and he addressed, and I think this is mandatory with you, but we addressed the need for, uh, a bookkeeper, and we were looking at some configurations of how the bookkeeper would be. Well, long behold, as I was doing the June minutes, I had the assistant to the bookkeeper. As I was doing the minutes, I went to Mr. DeGeneres, and he have not brought it back to the committee. So here we are tonight.
We were supposed to bring it back, um, for the August seventh meeting, but I think, you know, as we were looking at the position, we really weren't sure on the scope of what the position looked like. Um, so we came up with the, the, uh, job description that's in your packet now, and, and as you recall, this all came about to assist the athletic problems.
Right.
But there really was a need for, for more than just, just that, so, um, we're bringing it forward again. It would be a, a twenty-hour a week position, paid employee position, because we were also looking at maybe a contract service position, but I think as a, as an employee, that, you know, knowing there could be some flexibility there, so. So I don't know if there's any other questions about that.
I just have a comment. Then two years ago, the state came and did an audit of our business office, and at that time, they said that we should hire additional help in the business office, and we've gone two years without that help.
That was one of their recommendations.
Yeah, and I really, I really think that it's time to make the move.
I was gonna say that, and what's the salary range?
Um, we, we, we are thinking, uh, twenty-four dollars an hour to start. It would be an hourly, um, day position.
And then would they report two?
Two, myself, and to a bookkeeper, Jane.
Does the person get healthcare, uh, benefits?
They would at twenty hours, yes.
Twenty?
Yeah.
And is two weeks prorated for half-time, or is that a?
Well, it's an hourly, it's an hourly wage, so they would get paid an hour, depending on, you know, if they worked twenty hours, they would be paid the twenty hours, or nineteen, or whatever they, you know, they do. We'd like to keep it at twenty.
I would, if there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion to approve-
Approve the, yes.
The part-time bookkeeper.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of this position? Do you want to voice, uh, roll call vote?
Yes, before we, we used to vote, I just want at fifty weeks, that's about twenty-four thousand.
Yes.
Hi, Jean Stino.
Hi, Doctor.
Hi, Paul Nibody.
Hi, Derek Bulker.
And there are no notes, so pass this five, nothing. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
And are there, um, are there folks who are gonna be interviewed anywhere?
Well, we've, um, we've interviewed, and we've posted an interview, thought this was already approved. We do have a candidate that, um, we would like to, we just haven't done that until we knew there was a report.
And hopefully he or she will be available soon.
We are hoping. Kind enough to sit back and wait until we have this approved by the folks, so.
Next is a security update.
All right, so the last, the last thing in my report today is the security update, and really what this is referencing, I think I addressed the committee and told everybody that, uh, we were approached this year for a security grant through D E S C. And a little under fifty thousand dollars, and the grant was just received yesterday, was it?
Yes.
How much did you say?
Just a little under fifty thousand.
Forty-nine thousand eight hundred.
And we have a series of items that we're looking at to do purchasing, and the discussion of the box, for instance, might be something that would fall under that grant, but we've been waiting for this grant, so that we could do the structural changes on things, you know, for the existing doors and items like that, that the town hasn't been able to support us with, or, uh, physical changes in the building. So we're starting with the high school building, clearly, and then we will move over to Deer Hill and Osgood after we've completed this project. But we wanted to apprise the committee that we've received this grant, and so now we can move forward spending it. But, you know, we continue to talk where the monies will go. Specifically, we won't say, you know, openly out here, but we did want everybody to be aware that it has been passed.
Are we pursuing the door entry system? I can't remember the name.
The lobby guard.
Lobby guard, I guess.
That's what I was addressing with Dr. Lee.
You're saying, okay, got it.
Right, and, and you know, it's, the lobby guard is an excellent piece, because I know that Dr. Lee and Mrs. Stino used it when they came out to Milford. But you'd either have to somebody there, or it has to be between doors, or else if it were me, and you just walk right past it, sometimes you don't even see it, in fairness. So, we really need a system where people can't enter until they've put their information in and get their tag. So, once we have these structural changes, it would be easy. We really thought the structural changes on the doors were happening last spring. We were not, um, made aware they weren't budgeted until after the town meeting. So we couldn't do them that. Now that we have this grant, we're able to move forward.
Right.
Should help the advisory committee. Um, next up is the warrant. Manager Jackson, I'm here.
I will make a motion to approve warrant fourteen dash oh nine S.
Is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion? Okay, we need a roll call vote.
Um, I'm Mary Jennifer.
Hi, Paul Nibody.
Hi, Paul Sugar.
Hi, Jean Stino.
And next up-
Go like this, Dave.
Play out those powers.
Next up is the fiscal fifteen presentation.
We thought we'd do a real early update on some of the, um, issues that we think we're gonna see as we go through the budget process, so FY fifteen. So, just reminding you that it's very early in the process. A lot of the numbers may change, but, um, the concepts are still there, and the thoughts, you know, things that we have to think about, uh, as we go through the, the, uh, budget. So I don't know if you, you've already saved this in your packet, I'm not assuming. We had one meeting back in March, I think it was, no, March, October twenty-third, with the budget planning group, and, um, there was a forecast put forward, early forecast, uh, by the town manager, and he, um, had put down a budget number for us. You know, early budget number, you know, this is just early. We're not sure what's gonna change as we go along, but the, the number for, um, next year, he's forecasting as sixteen million, six hundred fifty-three, four seventy-two. Um, which is about a two-point-five percent in- increase, and we've seen that in the last three or four years, about two-point-five-three percent increase each year, and the amount, um, of money, four hundred sixteen dollars and forty plus. It's four hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred twenty dollars. So that's just early initial proposal. So, we, we would, we took a look at that number, and, um, there were some concerns about where we were gonna be with salaries next year. So we looked at our FY fifteen salary forecast. We didn't change any positions, we didn't add positions, we didn't like, you know, delete any positions, just everything the way it is now. We forecast twelve million, eight sixty-eight, five thirty-two for salaries next year. So that's an increase of about four hundred forty-two thousand over this year. Um, and if you look at what we are proposed to receive as an increase of four hundred sixteen thousand, we're already short only about twenty-six thousand.
I have a question, because this proposition, two and a half, how can they, uh, increase it by two-point-five-six?
Well, they can't, if they, if they have other revenues, they can, I believe. We can't increase the tax rate, but if we get more revenues than, say, from chapter seventy.
Yeah, okay.
I believe that you can increase it from that, from that way.
Yeah, the town budget.
I mean, the typical tax levy, two and a half percent, but added, and that is new growth in taxes and fees that are-
If there's any new growth in time, so.
Yeah, so it'd be here at point six.
Exize tax.
Yeah, excise taxes, independent as well as fees.
Right.
Does that twelve million, eight sixty-eight, five thirty-two include kindergarten salaries?
No, it does not.
Okay, so it doesn't include any of them?
It only includes the half-day kindergarten sale. We have one-
Half-day?
One class.
While we don't have to provide kindergarten.
Which we have to provide, one half-class that we have right now, a half-time teacher. It is proud of that number. But the full-day kindergarten is not, and I'll, I'll get to that, that's coming up.
Because I have a fundamental problem with eliminating that. I, I just, I really believe that the town needs to understand what the cost is to educate our students. And I also really believe that the parents who have their kids in full-day kindergarten need to understand how much it costs for us to be able to offer that.
Well, they're paying for it though, right?
They're, they're paying for it, but we're not paying.
They're not paying total. We'll, we'll, we'll see that as we go along.
And it's very controversial, Paul, for education is very controversial.
I know, but it's the way it is. Full-day, full-day kindergarten is-
It's not mandated yet. Right.
It's not mandated.
Some municipalities in the area will have full-day funded. I know-
Right, Hingham.
Hingham has it, um, some of them don't. Uh, if you look south of the Mason Dixon Hall, all the states already mandate full-day kindergarten. In the northeast, it's peculiar, even though education is strong in the northeast, it's a half-day kindergarten isn't, is, is common, which is unfortunate. I agree. I think the full-day kindergarten is part of education.
I'm looking at you with my hand up.
No.
Kind of was off. Um, in your Masmo group?
Yeah.
Does, does the Hingham business manager come to that?
Uh, yes, sure.
I'd be interested in knowing how other school districts do this. I mean, is, are, are there, is their tax rate higher? Do they not provide certain other items that, how can they completely be free without?
Offer it free. I mean, I know most schools in the South Shore don't. I mean, I know you've mentioned Hingham, but I know in Orwell situation-
That's right.
Right.
They all are tuition-based, like, um, like we are.
Hingham, uh, large part is their, their taxes.
The cash tax.
Because it's a bigger town. Okay, look at Derby Street, look at Three A.
You're a much bigger town.
Oh, it's completely different. We need a Derby Street and Three R.
I, I'll just make one other comment, because I know it's something that has been voted down repeatedly, town, I, because I talk with these super ten over there, they have benefited by the tax on food, which I know we have not agreed to, but just so you know, that's one thing that has been shared with me. I'm not asking the town to do it, but just so you're aware.
But the projection on what that would bring to a town this size was so technical, I think the people decided, let's just be different.
Right. No, and I understand that, because we are a considerably smaller town, but a place like Hingham has a lot of industry, and then they have a lot of commercial property going on that helps them.
They have a lot more restaurants too.
Right, that supports them greatly, and, uh, they are a growing town as well. They are really having trouble with having enough seats in the classroom for their students that are growing so rapidly right now.
King, yeah, totally.
So, we're, we're sidetracking your presentation, but I did just want to mention for the broader, uh, public that, you know, as we know, three-quarters of the budget is salaries, and those are contractually increased.
Right.
Um, at a, you know, a reasonable rate.
Percentage each year as negotiation.
Most of this two-point-five-six percent, obviously.
Right, yeah.
So, there's really not much discretionary increase at all that's in the budget.
But the reason I bring it up is, um, you know, we know that it is most of our budget, that we are service industry, right, but it doesn't leave us much for anything else. Like if we have increases in our utility rates, or we want to add a new program, another, you know, a reading program, or a math program, like we just added this year, it would be difficult to do. We've always been able to do all that up until this point, but, you know, we, these are, again, early numbers. It's just things that we have to think about as an administrative team, and as a committee on, you know, what, what the problem may be as we continue.
Did, did we do a projection, excuse me, a projection on what we believe we need to do?
Well, we're not finished with the-
We're not the town manager number. Do we actually have our number yet?
Not yet, no, because we're still, we're still in the process, we're about, um, getting everything in front of the administrators, you know, I don't know if they need new positions, or what they're really asking for at this point, but-
We put out notices to them to come and have their appointments.
We do have meetings set up with them in a couple of weeks, and then we should have the number by then, yeah.
All right.
But we usually discuss back and forth and kind of bet out what really our priorities are. We know we can't come back to the committee and ask for, you know, twenty percent increase or something, but-
Right.
You know, we, we do go through that whole, whole process. Um, this number also does include, um, offsets. We do have some offsets, like Metco Grant pays a portion of a couple of teachers' salaries, um, and that type of thing, but it, it, as you said, Mrs. Stino, doesn't include full-day kindergarten salaries there. The, um, the next thing we look at, you know, always look at, are the, the class sizes. Um, we are projecting for middle school next year about a forty-one student increase, if everything stays the same. Um, and, uh, last year, you may recall, we added four half positions because of the larger numbers, and now we're seeing again another large class coming in. So that's another thing that we have to be cognizant of and, and really look at, see if we can, you know, move positions around, or what we need to do to, to meet those needs. Um, we're still, we're still early on the full-day kindergarten enrollment. We don't know what that's gonna be. We just put what our current enrollment is now for, for next year at this point. Um, we still, we see an enrollment of increase of about thirteen students at Osgood next year, and a decrease at Deer Hill of about thirty-four students, so, uh, that may help us, you know, once we, we'll take a look at it.
Possibly one or two positions, maybe something else.
Well, in the past, we were, we've been able to move the position with the, the large group of students. Hopefully, we can look at that again and see if that will work or not, so, so that's, you know, that's one of the things we, we look at. This, um, shows you, this, so this goes back to full-day kindergarten. This is the, this is showing you the tuition involved in accounts, um, for this year, FY fourteen. As you know, we charge all the full-day kindergarten salaries to this account now, and I just wanted to show, um, the committee what our needs are from this, what we use this account for, and how it all plays out from the end. So we have an opening balance, uh, at the beginning of FY fourteen of three hundred ninety-three thousand, and we anticipate, uh, tuition receipts or revenues from the parents of about three hundred nineteen thousand. But our teacher salary expense for full-day kindergarten is, is gonna be about three hundred eighty-two, five eighty-two thousand. So, we need about thirty-six thousand, four sixty-eight to cover those teacher salaries, and that will come from our opening balance. As you know, that opening balance has been building up the last four, five, six, seven years, and we, we can roll that over legally to the next year, and that's why we, we do it, because we don't really know what our needs are until we get into the year. So if we, if we need to use that thirty-six thousand, then at the end of this year, um, will, our balance will be lower to about three hundred fifty-six thousand, and that will stop FY fifteen for next year. So just so you understand how that, how that works.
How do you get thirty-six thousand, four hundred sixty-eight?
It's the three hundred eighty-two thousand of the teacher. It's the three hundred eighty-two thousand of the teacher expense minus the anticipated revenues of three hundred nineteen thousand one fifty.
That doesn't give you thirty-six thousand four hundred eighty-six.
Is that not right?
No, it's totally wrong.
It is totally wrong. Now, how did that happen?
You subtracted the three five six one with three eight two. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, three dollars.
No, wait a minute, hold on a second. It's the three eight two minus the three nineteen. Yeah, you're right, that's wrong.
Correct. That's okay, we have math people here.
I'm glad you caught that.
Yeah, he just took the difference between the opening and the ending.
And the ending, right.
It was sort of here, here.
Yeah, but it rolls it off now.
Yes, it does.
Well, that's okay, that's why we call them preliminary.
That's right.
With about fifty thousand.
So it's sixty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-two, right?
So you've worked that from three ninety-three down to.
So that's the best amount remaining from the opening balance.
Yeah, which, so that is even worse than.
Sixty-three thousand five hundred thirty-two.
Five thirty-two, right.
So they expect a teacher, because you have the opening balance.
Right.
Uh, first you have expected teacher salary expenses, that's what it's going to cost.
Yes.
And you minus it from the revenues that you have.
What we anticipate coming in.
Exactly. And then you find out that, uh, right, that's what you need, sixty-three thousand five.
And that will come from the opening balance.
Yes, exactly. So it's three hundred ninety-three one three two minus sixty-three five three two. And it's an easy number to figure out.
So that's worse than I thought.
Nine. So that would be, um.
But the, not to focus on the number so much, it's just the, the, um, the idea that the expenses don't always meet the revenues coming in. You know, this is based on our three thousand dollars per student tuition rate that we increased last year.
Right.
I'm not saying that we increased it again, I'm just, this is what it's based on. So if you, if you go to the next slide.
So you've been buil- building up a balance, so now the balance that you build up would be three hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred, what?
We'll start in U.
Yes, you're going to use three hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred. However, if you expect teacher salaries to be three hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred, you know, depending how much you keep expecting each year, you keep chipping away at that.
Exactly, that's my point. That's the point.
Do you have everybody gets it?
Yes, that's the, the point of this next hour, next slide.
Uh, you could do a little diagram going.
Right, you could do a nice, going down, down, down.
You don't want your stocks to ever look at that.
Right. So this is what we're saying for FY fifteen. So if we keep, like, all the kindergarten teachers paid out of the tuition account again for next year, we have six full-time positions. We would need to, to cover their salaries about four hundred seventy-nine thousand two sixty-three. So this is another early forecast. So to cover that amount of.
So that would be the ex- expected teacher salary expense.
Expense, right.
For two thousand and fifteen.
Right.
Because that's going to be more, because you had more teachers.
Well, they got, they increase, you know, by contract, they increase each year.
And increase by contract.
Right. Sometimes they move over columns, you know, they increase the budget stuff.
And you're going to want four hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred sixty-three, and all you're going to have is three hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred dollars.
That's on the balance.
Right.
But, so to cover that four hundred seventy-nine thousand, we would need a hundred and sixty kindergarten students paying three thousand dollars each. But we know that's not going to happen. I've, I've never seen in the time I've had, I'm here, that we got a hundred and sixty students.
How many do we have?
About a hundred and thirteen. So next year, if we have a hundred and thirteen again, our, our, you know, as an early forecast, our revenues could be three hundred thirty-nine thousand. So we're going to be short again, because we need four hundred seventy-nine thousand, we're only going to get in three hundred thirty-nine thousand. So we'll be short, did I do that right, a hundred and forty thousand?
Yes, that is right. And that hundred and forty thousand four hundred sixty-three will come from the other twenty-nine thousand.
Coming from the ending balance.
Which is going to be chipped away.
Which is being chipped away. So in about two years' time, that balance will not exist.
Well.
Keeps going.
There is a way around it.
Tell me.
Okay, there's, obviously, you either chop off some kindergartners, okay, but you're going to raise your kindergarten class, rather.
Right.
You go up with your kindergarten class.
What do you mean, the fee?
No, the number of students.
The number of students.
If the number of students increase, that's one way. And the other way is you, you may have to increase the fee. Because remember, the three thousand was where compared to other towns? I forget, I didn't memorize it.
Well, I think we're probably in the middle still, right?
We're still in the middle.
I know, um, Department of Ed doesn't recommend that you go over four thousand dollars.
Okay, so if you went five hundred, five hundred times one hundred and thirteen is, you guys know that.
Yeah.
It's the answer.
About fifty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Fifty grand.
About fifty-five thousand?
Exactly.
But.
But that's not enough.
No, but it's heading in the right direction.
Why did the salaries, though, jump from three eighty-two to four seventy-nine? That's a twenty-five percent increase.
Right.
That seems like it's more than it should be.
Exactly.
Is there another, another salary in there?
There's six positions now.
But we have seven teachers.
Plus the half.
But we have a half-time, yeah.
But there's, there's no change, though, between fifteen, fourteen and fifteen.
Expected to ta- salary expenses for two thousand and fourteen.
Well, I think, I, I'm trying, I'm trying to remember now, if they, if they all moved up a step or a column change.
That's still twenty-five percent.
Yeah, that's.
Well, that could be, of course.
That's a huge gap. Dr. Schuber, one other comment, while he's looking at that.
And we have, actually, the three eighty-two is, we have somebody out on leave.
Okay.
And that's, so one, the person that's been taken over is at a lower rate.
Right. If there's sixty thousand missing or something.
That's what the, that's what the, that's what the issue is.
That's a sub-fee.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a sub-fee. It's a big difference.
We're probably always going to have that, aren't we? Kindergarten teachers often.
Well, I don't know. Couldn't tell.
Oh, you can't count them.
We can't depend.
Dr. Schuber, one other thing, just so, knowing too, that we have six full-time kindergarten teachers and a half-time. For a hundred and thirty students this year, if we should reduce our numbers, we certainly will look to reduce the number of kindergarten teachers.
Correct.
But that number of students is moving up, so we have to also be thinking about if somebody move up with them. So the salary won't go away completely, but it might not be sitting in the kindergarten class, I didn't know.
Correct.
And the forecasting becomes more and more important, as we've been talking about for some time.
Yes, correct. And as I see it, I think it's, when do we have to set the price for full-day kindergarten? For two thousand and fifteen, or two?
You, as a committee, you can set it anytime you choose to. We changed it, um, we.
We probably did it around, did we, March, was it?
I think we did last year.
Around, around the budget time, when you bought the budget.
And that's this year.
Right, that way we know.
When we talk about FY fifteen, are we talking about two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to set it for next September soon.
What, what you did was.
In the spring.
In the spring.
Okay, in the spring.
A little earlier than is possible.
So there's a strong possibility that it's going to have to, if we can go up a little.
Yes, but we'd like to see if we can work within the numbers we have. So that's why this is very preliminary, as we look at who's coming in, who's moving up, and so forth.
Right. It's very early, just, you know, just so you know, that we've got a long ways to go.
Really, our greatest concern is the fact that we, we have a number of teachers who, the half-time is one thing, to be coming out of the revolving account of a full-time kindergarten, while the, the second half of the day should not be getting removed.
Well, this is what this last slide shows. So if we, if we put that half-time, half of their salaries into the budget, our forecast becomes about thirteen million one thirty-two in salaries. So that would be an increase from last year of about seven hundred seven thousand. If we have that proposed increase that we saw at the budget planning group meeting, four hundred sixteen thousand, we would be about two hundred ninety thousand short. So that's if we add it back, we have, if we add back the half-time positions into kindergarten, say, it shows that if we weren't offering full-day kindergarten, we were only offering a half-day, which we're required to do, that would increase that salary by seven hundred seven.
You've already done it to come up with the two hundred and ninety, ninety thousand six hundred thirty-four, because you have in the bottom includes half-time kindergarten salary.
I've got it on the bottom, yes.
Do that well. You just made one little mistake.
Yeah, that's a big mistake. It's not more, it's not really about the numbers, it's more about what we have to think about moving forward, what, you know, we have to maybe make some decisions on some things that.
So the actual would be raise the fees for the kindergarten, larger class size and, um, lower salaries, or if you have a, if you have a hire that's coming along.
Put the salaries back into the budget, half the salary.
But, but if you had somebody in the kindergarten that was getting, let's say, a lower pay rate, that'd be how you could potentially do it.
Yeah, because these three positions are eighty-eight thousand dollars apiece.
Yeah.
These are significant.
Yep, yeah.
So if there's a retirement or somebody leaves or.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't.
We won't, nobody has come forward to say they're.
Our positions are eighty-eight thousand dollars apiece.
Between the thirteen and two.
Yes, so those are teachers at the, almost the highest level.
Highest level, right.
So our kindergarten teachers have been around for a while.
They might be.
They're very seasoned, they're very good.
And they're very educated and very seasoned, right. They are the best, yeah.
Yes. I can vouch for a kindergarten student right now enjoying such expertise.
Good.
But I see it as a temporary problem, because eventually it's going to rotate out to somebody, you know.
Well, eventually, right.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. If you retire or.
Go ahead.
A couple, you know, obviously, many of our staff, we're past fifty percent of our staff being on the top steps. So we know many of our staff have been here twenty-plus years, and we're grateful for that experience, and the kids are enriched by that experience, for sure. Uh, one thing that I want to note is that, according to the kindergarten grant, we have caps for the classroom that we cannot exceed in order to maintain the grant. So, uh, this year, before we put the kindergarten teacher, the extra teacher in, we had exceeded our cap by almost three students a classroom. So we're about, really, you should not, you cannot exceed twenty-one students in a classroom. So I just want to make that point, that, while we can certainly grow, we were sort of be twisted between this year as terms of what we had for numbers and what we really had to do to keep to the state limits and not want to lose that grant.
And then cap and then go to the next one.
So, but moving forward, certainly next year, now we can readjust, looking at the numbers, and see if we can.
And we have families who are very much against it as well, as we saw last year.
Right, well, absolutely, but the, the state has a limit, for sure.
Right.
Right. Um, as the, to go back to that kindergarten grant, that you said caps the number of students at twenty-one, how does that align itself with the accreditation process, which said that we could have twenty-three to twenty-four students?
Grant wins. The grant would have to win.
Yeah.
Because the grant is a state grant.
And how much is that grant? We don't have, you know, this month.
Well, see, the grant pays for the paraprofessionals, it doesn't pay for any teacher salaries.
Okay.
I think it's about forty thousand.
So there are no paraprof- there are no ESPs?
They've come out of this account, right.
Okay.
Yeah. Out of the tuition account, right.
Okay.
I mean, we do, we do purchase supplies, materials, and come out of this account. Uh, but we're trying to hold off on that, to preserve the balance a little bit. So, you know, just make sure.
I guess the, probably the only good thing is, when you mention about the distribution of the teachers, you know, it's almost the, it's a noble gas distribution, Maxwell-Boltzmann distribution. It's not a, you know, it kind of looks like.
Pauline likes math. And we'll, we'll have a math discussion.
It's a non-distribution that's even, it's not, you know.
Quite familiar with it.
So it, it, it firms and is heavy on, depending on the distribution of teachers or where they are in the salary.
Correct.
So we have a lot in the upper end that are both new retirement or at a high end that would potentially.
High column.
Yeah, high column.
Correct, correct. It's a temporary problem.
There's a wave there that's there, which, I mean, it's probably not going to happen immediately.
It's a temporary problem, and we have money.
In the next few years, okay.
And we have money so-called in the bank, so we're, we're, we're just like, you know, you, you don't want to use it all up in the next couple of years, because as I mathematically am calculating in my head about the distribution, it's going to be more than a couple of years before we get there. So, in terms of the teachers retiring and things like that, as, as I recall the distribution. So, I, you know, I think we're going to, and you're not going to go up thirty-three percent in your tuition, um, for kindergarten, because that'll affect your enrollment in full-day kindergarten, you'll only have people going elsewhere, because when you get to the point of private school kindergarten, and you pay. Exactly, you're going to have people going, uh, you know, maybe private school, if you get that expensive. But going up five hundred, you know, is going to help you, again, um, you're going to recruit, uh, about a third of that hundred and forty thousand dollar gap. You go up about fifty percent. So, uh, so it'll be a combination of things, so we're going to probably have to do, I see. And we'll have to be creative better. But we, we have incomplete information, I mean, it's a little early on.
It's early on, it is early. It's just, it's, you know, things that we have to think about.
I see a positive, perfect, uh, so, you know, if, if the trends ha- happen, the storm passes us, so to speak, if we are able to up the tuition a little bit, you know, and not, and not that five hundred is little, but certainly not a thousand, but like five hundred, and we end up with more than a hundred and thirteen students, which is quite possible, because we still have building going on here, uh, then, uh, we, we might just make it.
I, I, my first preference would clearly be not to have to do any raises if we avoid it. That would be the last resort.
Right.
And you don't want to get, you don't want to get to a point where you may have to add another teacher.
Correct.
You know, even though you've got the students there, there may be a point where you, you know, the classes are too large again.
Correct. So you, you have to figure it out. We have that problem with the buses, I mean, with a lot of different things that are quantity-dependent, and you just want to be careful. You have good service on buses, good service on this, and that, yeah, good class size. So we have to see what happens.
Yes, I actually just stumbled in, didn't know you were going to be discussing kindergarten tonight. And I came in actually to address the letter that I had sent to all of you, and only heard from Mrs. Estino. So I was unsure that you actually received my letter, which, with the role of communication being so important, I think when someone emails you specifically a letter asking to be, have an agenda item, it would have been nice to have been, had more than one response. So I appreciate your response, um, Jean. It was very nice of you to give back to me. Again, going back to the kindergarten, you have a major issue, and not only of just, oh, let's throw down the five hundred dollars at it. I mean, that, that at the very core is not what this is about. At the very core, you are obligated to give every student in Cohasset Public Schools half a day of kindergarten. So you shouldn't have taken that salary out. So the idea of re-implementing the half-day that is owed to Cohasset School children in the salary line and in your operating budget where it belongs, is one of the right things to do. But then at the very basis, when these fees were implemented, there was huge debate on how important full-day kindergarten was. Now, myself, I was on the opposite side of it. I was fine with half-day, found it to be fine for my family and my kid. But it became, you know, a big debate in what was best for all children and to offer it, because it's educationally sound. I think you need to have that discussion again, or do you all agree that half, full-day kindergarten is educationally the best way to go? And then if it is, possibly, then you should be looking at how you're going to implement it, or you're just going to go up five hundred dollars every year over the next, you know, ten years, because there, it's about equity. And not all families of all students are going to be able to spend thirty-five hundred dollars. Some can't always spend the three thousand. So it might also be an interesting, um, topic to discuss, is how many students are actually paying the full three thousand dollars, or how many are on scholarship? Because at some point, I'm assuming scholarship's going to have to enter into this debate, because four. because four thousand dollars is going to be a very hefty thing and I agree, I think most kids are going to, if you have a shot to go to, I don't know how much Inlee is or Derby or other schools, but they've got to be close to that. But I really think that I would like to see, you know, some more debate, I'm glad to see it's being pressed early on because you are going to roll, start rolling a deficit. And it's now or never where you stand up to the town and you say, the town just had a surplus of one point three million dollars, okay? So the cutbacks that have happened, there's, there's room if the taxpayers are rolling back one point three million dollars and that one point three now is going to go into buckets that you're actually not going to have much choice about, you know? You have choice about making sure our kids are educated and making sure that it's done equitably. So that someone that, you know, there's people that might have signed up for half day just because they don't want to have to go through and say, can't afford three thousand dollars even though I want my kid to have full day kindergarten. And it's an awful position for a person to be in. And it's awful to think that over the next year or two, you're going to actually think of increasing rather than staying at least stagnant. It was a very difficult choice to put this, these fees in to begin with, and I think it's incumbent upon you to keep, at least roll, roll one year at three thousand, I mean, two years at three thousand, see where you're at, but to just automatically say, oh, well, you know, we'll throw five hundred dollars more per student added and that'll solve our problem. You have a bigger problem. And part of the problem is too, is, yes, I have to make a decision here. Full day kindergarten, really what we're about, I thought we were about excellence. If we are, then pay for it. We're starting to chip away, that, that two hundred and sixteen, I've done the budget here. So I, I knew what was coming. You're in big trouble. You're, not maybe this year, but yeah, your salaries, Mr. Ogobani, increase eighteen percent. They go up and they go across. So in some given year, some people are getting probably in the neighborhood of fifteen to eighteen percent. So yes, when you say, oh, wow, and your top tier, is it still sixteen or, or did you increase it yet?
Still sixteen.
So sixteen years in a job is nothing now. Most people are going to stay in a job twenty-five years at least, minimum to teach, maybe thirty. So when you're looking at the eighty-eight thousand, it's probably going to be a hundred and two thousand by the time a couple of years come down the block. So you're only going to be in worse trouble. So this is something to look at, but just, once you take it out of your operating budget, you're never growing your operating budget. So that's where you kind of killed yourselves this year. You took the three hundred out and I understand that there's a big revolving account there, but you know, perhaps that could have paid for your ESPs or I'm not sure, but once you took that out of your operating line to build your base, two and a half percent every year, you are now, you're, it is not pretty. So that is my comment, but I would appreciate next time if I take the time to address you in a respectful manner that I at least get an email back saying, thank you for your comment, we'll take it under advisement. At least I know you've gotten it. I don't know how many other people you do that to, but I'm finding policies need to be put in throughout, everywhere. When someone sends a text, just tell me you got my text, you know? If I send an email, tell me you got my email. It's not just here, it's everywhere in this world. We need a little etiquette book on, on computer technology now, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just, just a couple of points. One is, you know, I, I don't think I got your email, I just checked my email to see if I missed it.
I wrote a letter. It was a while ago.
Yeah.
It was off topic for you.
I just looked at my whole inbox and I didn't...
He's trying to make up because maybe he has to...
I should.
Come from, Adrian, you know, mine bounced back, you have my old email. I sent you a new one, I did get...
I, 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 just for, for reference point, I just looked up here, just because I had no idea how much private school tuition was. It says here on his website, if it's correct, Derby, for example, it just came up seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
For kindergarten?
It's a, yeah, up to twenty-seven thousand for other grants. So significantly, significantly, yeah.
It's, it is very high.
But I guess I'm, in concept, I'm just wondering, I was, I was quite comfortable with the idea that we took out the, and, and we matched the salaries from, that were half day with the operating budget because those were, those were matched, right? So I'm, I'm just wondering about, Mrs. McCombs' concern, the, what you have, it seems appropriate to match, right? So if you end up having a half day kindergarten teacher because the class size increases next year, then we would have to add that to operating budget. But isn't it fiscally correct to only include in the operating budget those expenses that are related to half day kindergarten? So is that what I'm understanding?
I'm saying is the state, you have six, you have seven teachers. You're required to provide half day kindergarten for a hundred and...
Teacher.
Right, so you don't have, you have thirty-something, forty, let's call it forty thousand in there in the south by kindergarten.
The other half should go into the budget, because the, the second half is...
For the third half in a sense?
Right.
Okay.
So you don't have...
For the year we took it out.
I understand. You take the application for the...
We have a nice Massachusetts general law that provides half day kindergarten for all kindergarters and that whatever number of teachers you would need, three or four, should be included in the line as an operating cost.
I understand.
Because it also shows the true cost of running a district. So now you're using salaries with, out of a revolving account, you're, so I'm not sure how you're going to show the true operating cost of this district when you've taken three hundred and something thousand dollars out of the salary line. I mean, honestly, and that's where your foundation budget's...
You're taking the cost properly, which is offsetting with...
We're going to, we're going to show it on the revolving account here, of course you're going to see the cost there, but it's not going to show in your unappropriated budget.
That's the bottom line, and when you go to town meeting, I've been through this for years, you go into town meeting and everybody thinks, oh, this is great, you guys are doing great. People are paying three thousand dollars to send their kid to school, they're paying two hundred and fifty dollars a sport and a hundred and whatever to go on a bus. They're not ever going to see it and if it's mandated, then it should be in the operating budget, it's, it's a true cost, it's, it's not a fee. It's a true cost, it's what it costs to... So let's say all hell breaks loose and at the end of the day, you revert back to half day kindergarten. You wouldn't even have enough money in there to put, to pay teachers.
I forgot the point.
For half day. That's philosophical. And I get passionate, you know that.
Any other discussion?
Mrs. Mar Henry handled before, I don't know if you... Oh, I think it was addressed, I was just doing the math on the six positions at four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for FY fifteen, seventy-nine thousand change average for kindergarten teachers, so I was taken aback by that. And then even if you divided it by six and a half, it came up with seventy-three thousand three hundred for an average salary at kindergarten. So I don't understand if the people, if they're at the top, if, as you guys were saying, if, if kindergarten teachers are at the top level, okay, because of their tenure, then how do we have people going, how do we, it was also commented that there'd be teachers always going out on leave? So I don't know how we have teachers close to retirement at the top tier, at the top step, all the way across the chart, and yet we always have a teacher going out on leave.
Not necessarily close to retirement.
No, they're not.
Okay.
But retirement was brought up, that we would have teachers retiring.
If someone does retire at the, at the top level, thirteen years, fifteen years under the max is, and the, the highest step in column, the replacement cost would be probably less on someone you would hire because they wouldn't necessarily be...
They wouldn't be at the top.
At the top level.
Right, no, I understand that.
So that's it. It, it's not a huge amount, but, you know, if someone's at the very top and comes in, you know, step two or three, then there's a relative savings or cost benefit.
Do you have a point about maternity leave, right? Over, over six, six salaries that might be eighty-five thousand for five, at eighty-five, and one at thirty-five for someone who's quite young and maybe on the maternity leave after two years of service, it's still going to average out to that high number, seventy-eight. So you can do that both ways. In other words, most of the teachers could be on the high end of the spectrum, one or fifteen percent can be going at the low end of the spectrum off to maternity leave and still average out to seventy-eight, eighty thousand.
Right, which seems high for kindergarten. And the other thing regarding the, the first slide with projected salaries, I mean, if, if contracts in collective bargaining across every unit and individual contracts are raised more than two and a half percent a year, it's just math that there's going to be a shortfall.
Well, except for, as you pointed out, except for other growth items that increase the levy beyond two and a half percent.
Right, but you're talking strictly the cost.
But strictly, yeah, strictly the cost, your operating cost.
Right, right.
You know, if you, if you have step increases of three, five, and seven in units and you have individuals at eight, ten, and twelve, it's math, it's, you're going, you're going to have a shortfall.
Well, we've known that this was, was coming up.
I have a science to explain.
Any other discussion? Thanks.
Oh.
The election is gift me for the foundation.
Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you.
The CEF would like to donate one thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the Deer Hill Circus. So they've sent us the check already that's in the package. I believe this is the second year of the circus, yeah. And it was a big hit last year, I guess, so Deer Hill was trying to do the same thing again. We're just asking for...
Ask for a motion to accept the one thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the Deer Hill Circus.
I make a motion to accept the one thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the Deer Hill Circus. Second?
Any discussion? I'd like to thank again the CEF, this is again, the monies that are not necessarily in the operating budget or in fees and analysis, this is donations from the group, much like the P S O and the boosters and all the rest of that, these are monies that are allowing us to run the district in the cost that saves the town. On the favor?
I was at the P S O meeting, we voted on this from monies out of P S O budget, just to let you all know.
Oh.
Was it P S O?
What's that?
Hey, I'm sorry, is it P S O?
P S O.
So they, for the circus. Paul, if I could just, I know last year, both organizations came together and funded the program in its entirety. This year, I think Dr. DeCaro found money in the budget and then they're, that both organizations must have provided supplemental funds. We just haven't heard from the P S O in a form of way yet.
We haven't heard from P S O yet on us.
But wait a minute.
No. Where is the check?
I'm making a difference.
Has somebody got the check in their pocket?
No.
Is it in the mail?
We did a lot.
No, I don't have the notes from that meeting. I don't have the notes from that P S O president's meeting, but we did just vote on it, just wanted to make sure.
Well, we will be brought back at another meeting.
I just want to make sure. And we aren't receipt of anything right now, so we can't, because we can't, we can't accept it if we don't know.
Yeah. Square of time.
No, I just wanted to make sure, we voted on the monies as well, so, if you hadn't heard from P S O.
Okay.
Thank you.
As this is money we'll need a roll call board.
I, Mary McGolden.
I, Paul Nivany.
I, Paul Schuler.
I, Jan Stino.
I, Helen Lee.
And we all hope the P S O is looking at it too. Any communications?
Yep, I went to the board of elder room, so everything's going okay. Just chugging along, they're helping out the seniors over the holidays and Paul Pierce is very busy and they're definitely, we are continuing the, the land swap went through and signatures have been going on, so the groundbreaking should be happening in the near future and they're coming up with a founder's wall for the senior center. I think the founder's wall is like five thousand dollars, could be over a period of time or whatever, so it's going to happen, the senior center. And programs, you know, the seniors are definitely, you know, very much appreciative of the community's support over the holidays and things like that. And there is however, I think it is next week, a school council meeting and because Thanksgiving is Wednesday and no one wants to come to their doctor on Wednesday, I have to work Monday and Tuesday, so unfortunately I will not be able to. And they switched it because it's normally, the school council meetings are normally on Wednesday, but they did that because of Tuesday. Yes, and Tuesday is definitely a twelve hour workday from the month. Okay, thanks. Oh, yeah, one more thing. I did go to two of the town manager candidates, Mary and I were on the first one together and then I was stayed for the second one and, you know, I've seen very qualified and things like that. But, you know, it was good to be there.
Yeah, that was, I think the schedule was Saturday, Friday.
I think I sent you an email.
Yeah, thank you. It, it came up fairly quickly because they turned it through.
Correct.
Yeah, everything done. I thought it was nice to kind of show the flag of the schools that were clear of the process.
We composed, I think, at one point eighty percent of the audience, Mary and I, the school was very well represented. Maybe not eighty, but...
I think almost, well, Aaron was the other twenty.
Sixty-six percent of the audience.
Mrs. Estino and I are just working on the policy and standards and we'll be setting up a meeting for the capital projects and on the high school council meeting and I know too, just for the viewers at home, Mrs. Estino mentioned, they will be rerunning the interviews on the cable channel, so for people to, to get a look at the candidates might be a great idea if you weren't able to attend.
And I think, Jean, you were also about to, oh, actually, you have the, the videos you're going to review them?
Yes, I actually have watched two of them. So I still have two more from Monday and Tuesday and then the one from today that I haven't seen yet, so.
I got to the one on Wed, Tuesday and so too the candidate, so I just want to thank you for taking the time and effort to do that.
And one candidate was raised by a father who was a superintendent, I forget which one I have in mind. That was funny. That's good. Thanks.
I think the only other thing is a town meeting a week from Saturday, special time meeting.
It's Saturday, three days.
Time for us, yeah, I'll be upstate.
Been up a little late to, to meet as we're all here, Saturday, special time meeting. And there is, I don't know, any, any other, there is a reason to go into executive session that would be to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation.
Okay.
And we will come out of executive session for the sole purposes of the German. So I'd ask for a motion to, or to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation.
I make a motion, associated.
Second.
And we need a roll call.
I, Jane Stino.
I, Paul Schuler.
I, Paul.
Sorry?
I, Mary McGolden.
Thank you.
She said she, I have nothing from her.
This one says that she was...
It's more than two.
This one says that she was...
My son's birthday.
Yeah.
Oh, what is it, seems like forever. I got it.